It is now 5:00 PM, Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020. And I call to order the meeting of the Victorville City Council, Victorville Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District and the City Housing Asset Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez? Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez absent?
At this time, can we have a declaration of closed session items by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have two items this evening for closed session. The first is anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2 and the facts and circumstances pertaining thereto are set forth pursuant to government code 54956.9E2 on the agenda. The second item is real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8 and the property locations and the negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the regular six o'clock session.
Thank you. At this time, I don't have any cards, so I don't know if anybody wanted to speak. Is there anyone that wanted to speak at this time? If not, we will recess to close session and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.
Mayor, I'd like to say that I'm here at 5:01. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It is now 5:59. We will be starting in one minute. So please take your seats. We will be starting in just one minute.
Hello?
Hi, we have you on. We're going to start shortly.
Okay, I'm ready. Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 PM, March 3rd, 2020. And I call to order the meeting of the Victorville City Council, Victorville Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District and the City Housing Asset Accessor. And just for public information, I would like to say that we have our mayor, Protem, that's actually doing a teleconference due to the fact that she's not able to be here with us tonight. So bear with us, but she is on board and she is listening. So I will continue. At this time, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Here.
Councilmember Gomez? Councilmember Jones? Mayor Protem Ramirez?
I'm ready.
Mayor Protem Ramirez? She's here.
I'm ready.
Mayor Garcia? Councilmember Gomez absent.
At this time, may we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had two items this evening. First item was anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2 and the facts and circumstances related to that are set forth on the agenda. The other item was real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8 and the property designations and negotiating parties are also set forth on the agenda. At this point, there is no reportable action with respect to either of those items.
Thank you very much. We will have the invocation by our pastor Dane Davis of Impact Christian Church. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Police Chief Rick Besseger, so please stand.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, I thank you, Lord, for the prayer of St. Francis of Assisi that you had me memorize years ago, Lord, a prayer that reminds us that life is not about us. You didn't put us on this earth, Lord, to serve ourselves, but to serve others and to bring honor and glory to your name. So in the words of that prayer, "Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. Where there is sadness, joy." Oh divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive. It is in pardoning that we are pardoned. And it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Heavenly Father, bless our leaders as they make decisions on behalf of our community tonight. Give them wisdom, guidance and unity. And be with Dr. Ramirez tonight, Lord. We thank you that she can be with us through teleconference. Encourage and strengthen her as well, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Third allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the reasons for which it stands for a nation under God, invincible, for liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we do have a proclamation and a special presentation by Homeless Solutions Task Force Updates.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, Cassandra Circe is our Homeless Solutions Coordinator. And one of the things that I wanted to do is use this opportunity to at least share with you our latest. We've accomplished a lot, we believe, over the course of less than a year, to the point where the last action before this council was to approve a strategic plan. We do have a task force in place. Ms. Circe is our point person in helping shape where we're headed. So with that, we've got a presentation to share with you and give you an overview as to where we're headed. There is no direction being sought, but certainly as we near the end of the presentation, there's some suggestions about locations. And to the extent you have feedback to offer, we'd certainly value that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia, members of the council. I'm here to present to you our... Hold me back up. I'm here to provide an update on the Homelessness Solutions Task Force and also to present to you our plan to alleviate homelessness through the creation of a 150-bed wellness and recuperative care center that will act as an onsite support service, providing shelter, medical respite and housing assistance to help stabilize...
Excuse me, one second. I don't know if they can hear you. Can you hear back there? Rita, are you hearing?
It's a little muffled.
Can they turn the mic up?
I'll just speak into it.
Okay. Is this better?
Yes.
That's much better. Thank you.
Okay, so let me start over. So I'm here to provide an update for the Homelessness Solutions Task Force and present to you our plan to create a 150-bed wellness and recuperative care center that will act as a shelter and provide onsite supportive services, medical respite and housing assistance to stabilize our homeless communities. But before I discuss the details of this plan, I'd like to highlight some current developments. If you are not aware, California now has 53% of our nation's unsheltered homeless population. And there's been a political shift. Cities are now pushed to the forefront to solve its own homeless problems despite not having adequate resources or the infrastructure in place to do so. To complicate matters further, cities are being sued in federal courts for criminalizing and punishing the homeless. And what this means for our city is that we are unable to enforce anti-camping ordinances and public nuisance laws unless we have adequate shelter beds in place. Multiple city departments are being affected by homelessness and it's causing an increased strain on city resources and manpower. And just to illustrate, in 2019, city staff exhausted 339 hours in homeless-related cleanup efforts, which included the disposal of 155 tons of trash and solid waste. There were 315 homeless encampment cases that were created. And in regards to mobilizing a response to the encampments, it requires the coordination of code enforcement, law enforcement and community services. So again, I'm illustrating how our city resources are being impacted. Furthermore, homelessness is having a ripple effect in our communities and it is negatively impacting the public, our businesses and the environment. And the reason for this is primarily because people without housing are high consumers of public resources. And in such, they tend to generate an expense to a city rather than income. So if our city is trying to, or if our city does not take the steps to stabilize the homeless community, these negative impacts will continue. But fortunately, city council and its commitment to reduce homelessness took a proactive step and created the, or approved the creation of the Homelessness Solutions Task Force. And that was formed in February 2019. You can see from the list that the task force is made up of 12 stakeholders representing different segments of the community. Also, please take note that we do have representation for the homeless community. And then city council took another proactive step and approved the hiring of its first Homelessness Solutions Coordinator, and that would be me. And through a collaborative effort, the task force and myself, we developed a strategic action plan which was also approved by city council on November 5th, 2019. So, the first priority in our strategic action plan is the creation of an enhanced shelter operation, which we are referring to as the Wellness and Recuperative Care Center. This collaborative project will be ran or managed by contracted lead operators and it will consist of two distinct components that will provide the services that I mentioned before regarding enhanced shelter and medical respite. The first component is the Wellness Center and it will provide 100 shelter beds and support services to homeless men, women and families. And the second component is our Recuperative Care Center and it will provide 50 medical respite beds. I want you to take note to some of the amenities in this Wellness Center. It's different than any typical shelter. We will have the separate sleeping areas for the men, women and families so people can stay together, couples can stay together, families can stay together. The basic needs will be met, which includes the meals and the ability to shower, the ability to have a mailbox so that you can receive important documentations. People will be assigned a case manager so they can have an individualized service plan to help with stabilization. And this will include assistance with documentation readiness, income stabilization and housing navigation. There will be a variety of support services onsite to include workforce training, job readiness skills, life skills, recovery classes. There will be space for pet kennels so if a homeless person had an animal or a pet, they can bring it to the Wellness Center. There would be space for storage lockers and bins so that people can safely secure their items. And then another neat component is that our Wellness Center will be similar to a day center so that individuals can rest and they can recover and they can work on their individualized case plan rather than being forced out in the community like typical shelters. And in such, this will reduce the foot traffic and visibility of homeless persons in our communities and business districts. Looking at this Wellness Center a little bit further, you can see from the flow chart how a person would enter homeless. They would receive access to onsite services that I just mentioned and they will exit stabilized. But what I really want you to understand is that this component is going to utilize a multi-agency collaboration that will consist of nonprofits and government agencies. So, for example, if a person came to the Wellness Center, the case manager will be able to assess and may determine that this person shows signs of a mild or moderate mental health disorder. And then they can connect this individual to a representative from the Department of Behavioral Health who was onsite. In the same sense, if an individual came to the Wellness Center and they, let's say, had income because they worked at Walmart or McDonald's or whatever, but they simply cannot afford housing on their own, so therefore they are homeless. They're sleeping in their cars. Then that case manager can connect them to an onsite housing agency and they can have assistance with rapid rehousing, transitional housing or permanent supportive housing. So basically, we're not reinventing the wheel. We're just working more collaboratively with programs that already exist under one roof in a one-stop-shop model. The second component is recuperative care, which is medical respite. And this is something that will be heavily utilized by the three local hospitals. Respite care, for the most part, is going to be a benefit financially to the hospitals, but it's also going to be a benefit to a person who's able to be discharged to the Recuperative Care Center. And the reason is because hospitals are not able to discharge a homeless person who still requires some type of recovery or care to a typical shelter. You just can't do it. But the hospital can discharge an individual to a Recuperative Care Center. And the benefit is that while this person is recovering from their illness or injury, they will have access to the same onsite services that I just mentioned in the Wellness Center. At the bottom of the screen, you see where it says a seven-day stay in the hospital is equal to one year's rent. It's a sad statement, but it's true. So I want to break this down for you. For a typical seven-day stay in the hospital, it will cost anywhere between $16,000 to $21,000 for a one-week stay. But if that hospital were to discharge an individual to a Recuperative Care Center, the cost ranges between $1,400 and $1,800 rounding up for one week. So that's a considerable savings to the hospital. But the other benefit to the hospitals would be that you will not have homeless individuals dealing with, you know, cycling in and out of the hospitals. They will lower the recidivism rate. And it will also allow hospitals to improve their ER wait times. It will allow hospitals to increase their bed availability. And it will allow the recuperative care patient to receive the help that they need to stabilize. Now, I've focused on two components already, and that's the shelter component and the medical respite. But the third component that we're looking at is a community benefit. We are right now talking to healthcare agencies that want to provide onsite medical services at the Wellness and Recuperative Care Facility. These services would be free to the occupants of the Wellness and Recuperative Care Center and it would cover medical, it would cover pharmaceutical and it would cover dental. The benefit to the community is that those same services will be available to community members as well. These services will be completely free to the occupants of the Wellness and Recuperative Care Center and it would be a nominal cost, like $3 to $5 per visit for community members. And if they did not have the fee, no one will be turned away. This model is ideal for people who do not have healthcare insurance and it's also excellent for people who have chronic conditions and they have difficulty with their medical share of costs. The second component that will be beneficial to the community is the homeless prevention services. If you live in the community and let's say you find yourself at risk of being homeless because you've suffered a financial hardship, let's say, for example, something happened to your car and you had to repair it because you need your car to go to work. Well, in this particular case, that individual can come to the Wellness Center and get help with rental assistance, utility assistance and financial counseling. So we're not leaving the community out of this equation. So now we're looking at the how and the where. Please note that city staff has extensively researched different construction methods, looking for the most cost-effective and time-saving way to construct this facility. And we've narrowed down alternative construction methods, which includes modular construction. If you're not familiar with modular constructions, basically, the building is put together off-site and then it's assembled at its final location. And there's a variety of facades, outside facades that can be used. I'm just going to give you an example here. These three pictures are just illustrations, but they are all modular constructions. So they can be as fancy or as simple. But basically, we have aesthetically pleasing options, very flexible. I want you to know that city staff has examined a building. We actually connected with a local modular company and we toured the plant. And we're looking at a building that would be able to encompass the Wellness and Recuperative Care Center. It's approximately 17,000 square feet. But basically, I want you to understand this building was previously used by the state of California. This was formerly a detention facility out in San Isidro. The building is three years old, but it's only been occupied for two years. In such, it just leads to the flexibility of being either divided into two. It can be reconfigured. It just leads to a lot of options that are not available on a typical brick and mortar style building. There are two potential sites that the city is examining. Both are owned by the city. The first site, an option one, is near Evadale Park. And the second option is in Old Town. As you can see from the second option, the space is divided. Whether it was like the Wellness or Recuperative Care Center would be across the street from each other, but that's fine. Both sites would work equally well. The reason why the city is looking at city-owned land is because of the grant process. The fact that the city would be able to have site control would give us an extra benefit moving forward with the grant process. And in terms of the city's vision, we hope to move forward with the modular construction and in that case, we would have ownership of the building. The plans would be state-approved. These are some of the features that would be offered in a modular construction and that's the multiple restrooms and showers for men and women, the fine sleeping areas for individuals and families, the medical evaluation rooms, the private interview rooms, an industrial kitchen, dining hall, recreation, various office spaces for the onsite support agencies and the room for storage and kennel areas. And in terms of next step, the city definitely intends to decide on a location and for that, we are seeking feedback from city council. And once a location is decided, the city will pursue entitlements. We are continuously pursuing funding options. This building is state-approved. And once in place, we will initiate a request for a proposal for lead operators to manage the Wellness and Recuperative Care Center. The building will be leased to operators and the city will continue to form strategic partnerships. And that concludes this presentation.
I think now would be an opportunity for any questions or comments from the council. Maybe before doing that, I know we have a few members of the Appointed Homelessness Solutions Task Force. I'd like to recognize them because the work that they're doing has been invaluable when it has come to getting us to where we're at in terms of not only the plan that this council approved, but helping offer advice and priority in getting us to this stage with you tonight. So maybe either stand or raise your hand just to be recognized for your effort. I do personally thank you.
Thank you for your excellent presentation. Have any questions?
I have just a few, if I might, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Are there any barriers to entry to the Wellness and Recuperative Center?
It's a low barrier. However, there will be a couple of barriers. For instance, because we're having children and families, we will not be able to allow sex offenders. We will not be able to allow people who have a history of violent crimes or open or active warrants. But for the most part, it will be low barrier, checking out a lot of boxes so people can enter.
Okay. And then to what degree, if any, are our local nonprofits coordinating efforts for the center?
Okay, so right now, there would be a combination of nonprofits and local governments. And in terms of the coordination, it would pretty much be through MOUs, Memorandums of Understanding. The agencies are willing to provide services free of cost to the city with the ability to occupy the space and meet the need.
And it looks like the intent here is really to provide a form, if not directly, of wraparound services. Do I correct, understand that correctly?
Correct.
And then with regard to our ability to enforce our present laws, I know that there's a position that we have to make sure that we have available shelter. Does that available shelter have to be a strong demonstration that we're attempting to meet the need or does it have to, we have to meet every one-on-one need?
Let me clarify, the available shelter needs to meet the need of our unsheltered homeless population, not our entire homeless population.
Thank you. And... I think that's it. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, well, I just want to make a comment. It's a question to the manager. There's been a lot of discussion in regard to the city's joint agreement with the county to convert Queens Motel to homeless. Is this in conjunction or separate? Would you explain that briefly, please?
This is totally separate, what we've presented to you tonight, and totally independent. The Queens Motel, which is being re-coined Desert Haven and I'm not sure of the latest update. The last update I had was that it was expected to be complete in April. But that's geared more towards the segment of the homeless population that are considered chronically homeless?
You know, I have a lot of questions, a lot. But what I'm going to do with the permission of my colleagues, I'm just going to wait and I'm going to add this to a workshop agenda and then I can ask all my questions. Hopefully, if I didn't, we'll have Dr. Rita available as well because I know she's really concerned of what's going on. I mean, you're doing great. I'm just rabagasted of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I know my question was answered because that was also under the assumption that it was actually connected to the Queens Motel, which is the Desert Haven project. But I understand now that it's separate. But let me find out, Rita, if she has anything?
Yes, I would like to say thank you very much for your wonderful presentation. But I would like to have a written presentation as well so that I can follow up. And I would appreciate if you could have a list of the meetings of the task force so that when we're available, we can also be in the attendance. Because the more that we can do and the more that we know, the more we can help. So I appreciate the work of everyone in the task force. But I personally would like to have a record, a written presentation so that I can underline all the important items that I probably didn't get. I just write some, but I didn't get them all. And I would like very much to attend your meetings whenever possible. So thank you for all your wonderful work and I appreciate your desire to help others.
Thank you, Rita. Thank you very much. I believe those, I believe those were all the questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beautiful presentation. At this time, I will ask our city clerk to please present the agenda and revisions to the agenda.
The city council welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Anyone wishing to speak during public comment or on a particular item is requested to complete a speaker card and hand it to any sheriff's deputy prior to a public comment or before an agenda item is discussed. Comments will be limited to three minutes or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council, not to the members of the audience. Individuals should not approach the dais unless authorized by the presiding officer. In accordance with state law, the city council may not take any action on any non-agenda items. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. the meeting is subject to removal. The presiding officer may request a peace officer to assist with removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 403. There are no revisions to report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, if there's any conflict of interest on any of the items, agenda items, can you please identify this at this time? Are there any conflicts on any items on the agenda? So we will be moving on to public hearings, and the first item that we have is approve a notice of exemption and award of construction contract to CS Legacy Construction, Inc., for the skate park at Doris Davies Park. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the city council approved the notice of exemption for the skate park at Doris Davies Park, award a construction contract to CS Legacy Construction for the skate park at Doris Davies Park in the amount of $1,199,528.
Thank you. At this time, council members, I will ask you if you have any questions of staff, and I'll start with Councilmember Cox.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Metzler, we're here tonight for a second public hearing to consider whether to award the skate park contract to CS Legacy Construction. Will you please offer us a thumbnail sketch of the evolution of this project, much as you did at our last meeting?
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council, before you tonight is the item dealing with the construction contract for the proposed skate park at Doris Davies. This is a project that we, as a council and as a team, have worked on dating back to October of 2015. And it first started with the council having directed its Community Services Advisory Committee to recommend a preferred park location. The CSAC, as we call it, had expended time working with staff deliberating. They did go through a deliberative process, and it was ultimately recommended by the CSAC to the council that Doris Davies be the select park for the construction of an ultimate skateboard park. The city council went so far as in July of 2017 to approve a design-build contract. That design-build contract was put on hold when I came onboard as the city manager in January of 2018. I did see some issues as it related to that contract, and I was primarily concerned that a design-build contract didn't offer the city the best opportunity to control improperly managed costs. My preferred approach, and my past approach on many, many projects, has been deliberate in going through what we call a design, then bid, then build project. And so, we pumped the brakes a little bit in January of 2008, but then we subsequently, in February of 2018, brought on an actual design firm to help work with our engineering department to develop a design. And through those efforts, which, those efforts included also having done additional survey to look at not only the scope of what would be an ideal skateboard park project, there was also a survey to identify what would make our skateboard park collectively great. And so, we did get community feedback, and that community feedback did yield some of what you see in item two on the agenda, which is the amenities component of the collective project. But ultimately, we did bring back, finally in November of 2018, a bundled project of amenities and skateboard park. And backing up, there was actually a direction before getting to the first proposed award of contract for construction, there was a point in time in May where the city council considered two options that were being recommended that resulted from those survey results. One was a smaller project, a smaller skateboard park project, similar to what was envisioned back in January of 2018. Or a much larger project that was designed with expanded capability, not just so focused on skateboard use, but also for, I call them rollerbladers, there's probably a more appropriate term, but also for BMX. Really intended to be a design that was geared towards attracting more of the enthusiast to our skateboard park. The city council actually chose and directed staff to proceed with the much larger design, which is the basis of design that we used in ultimately bidding this project. We have brought this project back previously in a singular fashion, and because there was some perceived sticker shock related to the combined bid process, staff was directed at a time to separate them out, so that if it became a fiscal question, it was easier to pick and choose, if you will, elements. But that leads us to where we're at today, which is not an issue so much of approving the building of a skateboard park, because we've been directed to do that over the course of time. The issue before this council, as this item speaks very specific to the question of whether or not you want to award a construction contract to CS Legacy, in this case, in the order of $1.259 million.
Thank you. And do you consider the public hearings held over the span of this project to have been robust and fairly administered?
Yes, I do.
Does the will of the people take into account that some individuals might genuinely disagree on a matter?
I think that's the healthiest part of the deliberation that we've had, is that we've seen varying opinions. And despite those varying opinions and the deliberation that's occurred over the course of time, at least for staff, what's been clear is the direction, which is, despite the opinions, the direction has been clear to proceed down the path to lead us to where we're at today.
And what, if anything, has changed since November 2018 that would cause the city or the council, for that matter, to believe that it aired in its original decision?
I'm sorry, can you restate that?
Sure. So the last direction given in 2018 was to proceed with the bid process. Has anything occurred since that time that would give rise to our thinking that our original decision was an error?
No.
Thank you. Do I recall correctly that since the installation of this very council, that's fifteen months, no council member has requested an agenda item to reconsider the viability of the skate park project, whether it should be relocated or to have another look at the will of the people?
That's correct.
Thank you. Our Community Services Advisory Committee, with the help of Green Play, is developing a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Has Green Play expressed any concern that the pending skate park project is inappropriate for our city?
I'm not aware that they've expressed any opinion. Green Play is a consultant that we've brought onboard to help advise us of our master plan needs into the future. I know one of the things that they're doing currently is inventorying all of our park amenities. And so, effectively, they're establishing a baseline of what park offerings we have to our residents. This factors into that baseline. We have heard in the past through different surveys that there is a desire for a skateboard park facility, and so with that, I believe there's also some formulaic equations that really identify what is an acceptable amount of square footage when a community is desirous of a skateboard park project. Building this project, if there's a decision tonight to build this, I think it will help facilitate the master planner to come up with much clearer decisions, or recommendations, I should say, as to what future parks projects are gonna be. It's possible to conceive that, absent a decision tonight to move forward, that the master planner comes back and basically restates what we've been advised of in the past, which is there's a desire for a skateboard park project, and using their formula, that could actually translate into perhaps having much larger square footage, because we didn't effectively complete the first project before the council.
Thank you. And with an award of the contract tonight, we will authorize a very specific plan. Does investing in parks and recreation improvement help to transform an unwanted, unhealthy culture at a site into a more wholesome culture?
Well, I believe it does. I think one of the best things to do, it's my opinion, especially when you have parks that have been, that have lived a life, an extensive life, they can deteriorate, they can become less desirable, and I do believe reinvesting in those parks, however which way the council chooses, but reinvesting to make them more attractive and more used, I think extends the life of those original park investments that you made.
Okay, and in thinking about the contract award, I think about potential safety issues at Doris Davies Park. What might the city do, or what will the city do, to protect its investment there?
Well, one of the things that was envisioned as a part of the next item, which is the amenities component, is to actually increase the lighting, increase, we actually have the installation of security cameras to actually be able to monitor what's going on out there. But certainly, you know, we believe that there is going to be a continued amount of staff out there responsible for the operation and maintenance of that facility. It's ultimately a policy of this council as to increasing the level of service in terms of security. Examples of that might be increased patrol, whether it's via code enforcement or the sheriff's department. One thing that could be considered is looking at adding code enforcement or even a park ranger-type concept, not just for this park, but for other parks, because we do have a number of parks that do require security-related attention above and beyond what we provide to the rest of the city.
All right, and will you please describe the level of work already undertaken by city staff and those submitting proposals?
Multiple departments have been involved. Certainly, this project has been led largely through the efforts of the Community Services Department, which is where Parks and Recreation resides, so there's been considerable amount of time spent by that group, also working with CSAC and organizing and seeking their feedback. Ms. Janelle Davidson, our Director of Community Services, has been very much involved in helping lead to get us to this point. But we've also developed an internal engineering team to actually help facilitate the design process and working with the external designers. The engineering department is largely responsible for the technical detail that goes into the bid package, which is led up by the Purchasing Division and the Finance Department. Those two divisions, as a team, engineering and purchasing, work extensively, not only to draft the RFP, but also to solicit the RFP, review bids, qualify bids, and effectively get it to the stage, which is where it's at tonight, and which is also why you see the city engineer's name on the staff report, because this is a capital project, and engineering has extensive experience in capital projects. This is being authored under his recommendation.
Thank you. And does CS Legacy Construction have the expertise and resources necessary to take this project to completion?
I do believe so. That's an evaluation that we undertake as a part of the bid review, and I do have a qualified team that's experienced in reviewing qualifications of all contractors, so given their recommendation, I do believe, so.
All right, and what fallout and unintended consequences could ensue to the city if, at this juncture, in a skate park project, the council fails to award the contract?
I don't foresee anything at this time.
So if we don't follow through with this normal part in the process, there's no impact on potential future bidders or attracting businesses to our community?
Well, considering that we've been through this a couple of times, you know, I do believe there's a possibility of reputational risk, especially as it relates to going out for future construction projects. I think there's been a very public direction to move forward with this project, and now to have gone through a RFP solicitation process twice, it's likely that that could impact the desire of the construction community taking serious future construction projects. And that might be a stretch in terms of reality, but I could see, that's how I would try to define what a reputational risk might be.
All right, and drawing from your experience, would it be conventional practice for a council to reject the award of a bid for reasons external to the proposal itself?
I would say at this point, it's certainly within the discretion of the council. I think considering the last 24 years that I've been with the city, and considering the clear direction that we've had over the course of time, I would consider it unusual, but I would also qualify that by saying that it's certainly within the discretion of this council to decide on this item before you.
All right, and is it accurate to say that the sole purpose of this agenda item is to determine whether the council should order a notice of exemption-
About thirty seconds?
... and award the contract to CS Legacy Construction?
Yes.
Thank you. And is it true that-
I'm not.
I believe I still had thirty seconds. Thank you. So give me a second to find my place. So you spoke earlier about the decision having already been made, the will of the people having already been made, and that really bears itself out with, by the fact that it's demonstrated by our good faith course of conduct over all this time. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Gomez, do you have something?
So I do have a few questions in terms of clarification. Some of the figures that are adopted here, in my opinion, are a bit convoluted, so I wanted to have clarity. And so, on that context, I'll be asking a couple of questions. So you look here where it says in the amount of 1.1 around, and then I see that fiscal impact is 1.3, and then I'm looking at LTF funds. I was trying to bring everything together, but I think it's been piecemealed. So if that's the case, would you clarify?
Yes, Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, I think what the item is identifying first is that the fiscal impact associated specifically with this item, this item, is that it would cost 1.259 million. Broken down, we've identified by account number, whether it's the Recreation DIF Fund or the Local Transportation Fund. If you break that down into the, and look at the 1.26 number and the 68,655, those two added together gets you to, I thought, but that math is not working. Recreation DIFs, 1.2650. Aren't those two supposed to add up?
So if you go to page nine, you'll see the 1.259505 is broken down by the bid, which is the contract amount, and the inspection and testing, which is a separate contract.
Okay. I'm sorry, Councilmember Gomez. So the total amount is 1.259 million. The two account numbers that are listed, the 1.26 and the 68, aggregate to a number that includes the total construction, to where we're also gonna have separately a independent inspection contract for the order of 59, 59977. Sorry about that.
So if I may ask a question, it's still a bit unclear. So I hear you saying that it's 1.25, which is the total cost, but what is the LTF and the DIF doing in terms of bringing, is that a separate thing that we're looking at now?
So we're breaking down the two different funding sources. I think the easiest way to describe the component of the total project that is eligible to be spent- out of LTF, which is Local Transportation Funds, largely is the flatwork, the sidewalk along Hughes Drive, if I'm getting the head nod, yes. So there is a component that is eligible for an alternative funding source than DIF. And so the sidewalk component of this project along Hughes will be funded out of LTF. The remainder of the project will be funded out of the Recreational Development Impact Fee Fund, which is a fund that collects fees from developers tied to new construction.
So was there any possible way, when we had the 6.6 million availability, that we did a breakdown? So council looked exactly what was happening, because I thought it was piecemealed. When I look at the 5% approximation, and then three different figures, and then a skate park costing 1.1, I don't understand how everything adds to 1.1 where there's figures that are, you know, that are elevated to a different. I just want to understand the estimation or the actualization of the numeric figures that I'm looking at.
So the $6.6 million number that's identified in the staff report, that's actually showing your available cash in the Recreation DIF Fund. So the award, if the council was inclined to award this construction contract tonight, from that $6.6 million cash available, 1.26 would actually be drawn for this project to pay for the skateboard park.
1.26, what would be drawn, what is the 68, it would be drawn from a different account, LTF?
That's correct, the 68, correct, yes.
Okay, and what about the seven, so 1.251 from Rec. DIF and 7, or 7,000, where is that also from LTF? I guess all I'm trying to say is, next time when we write this report, I do add numbers, and I do kind of look at the figures. Just if you would make it clear for council, so when they look at the numbers, it looks like, you know, what's the subtraction, what's left over, what's the cost? And then you can break it down, but other than that, I'm having a very difficult time looking at it when we're talking about a skate park costing 1.1, but then we see different figures. And I'm sure it was the best intent, it's just the way I'm used to looking at numeric figures and estimations.
So, yeah, and I'm terribly sorry, but there's a lot of numbers being thrown around. The 1.1 is actually, I believe what you're speaking to is 1.199, which is under the recommendation. And that's just speaking to the particular component of this project that would be awarded to CS Legacy. The total cost of the project is the 1.259 number that's identified in the fiscal impact. So that would be the CS Legacy component, which if you flip over to page nine, you'll see the 1.199 number for CS Legacy. And then independently, a different company is who we would hire for an inspection and testing. That's the 59,000, that's how you get to the aggregate of 1.259. That number collectively is how those numbers tie.
You could just give me figures later, I mean, I'll still study it, but I'm not going to belabor what we're talking about right now. The other two questions I have, for one, you talked about security in parks and the potentiality of having someone. Is that under your purview, or would that come to city council to have that?
I'm sorry, for adding security?
Yeah, for adding security or a park ranger, would that be under your municipal power, or would that come back to the council?
Not without a council's approval. It would be considered a policy decision. Typically, that would be a policy decision that we contemplate as a part of the budget process. And adding to that, it would also be a part of the table of organization process that we take before the council. That position, just using that as an example, and that might not be the best example, but if we identified, say, park ranger, let's say, that's a position that's not currently in our table of org. And if the council was desirous, and that's typically what we seek as feedback in the workshops from the council, is if we were to hear from the council, we need to start considering something like that. We would work that in the budget development process. And at the time where we take the budget and the table of organization forward, we could then likely approve that type of a position. Once the position's approved, then it would be within my authority to administer to that policy. So then I could actually ask the Human Resources Department to start the recruitment process for that position. But absent the at-large policy direction from the council and the policy buy-in through the budget approval process, I can't really do anything outside that document.
Okay, and then the final question was, you said something about, I don't know if it was a consultant, or that's wrong terminology that I'm using, but someone outside coming into a skate park in terms of consultation would have to rework the space? What did you mean by that?
Not so much rework the space, so CS, I'm sorry, not CS, Green Play is the consultant that we currently have, completely independent of this item before you. But what we have done, and we've started the process where we've held some workshops, we've even had them meet with council members to seek feedback as to if, as to the basic question, if we want to look forward five years, what do we want the city to look like from a Parks and Recreation perspective? And with that, what are those master planned improvements we want to plan for and try to develop over that course of time? So that's something, again, completely independent of this item, Green Play is working on. And so as a part of those community outreach efforts, seeking community feedback, you know, they're going to get a lot of information from a lot of people, given recommendation as to what this community wants. And I think, not to say that it would rework this project, it has nothing to do with this project, but I think the point that I was trying to make is, we are hearing from the community for a desired skateboard park. And we don't necessarily know, based upon some of the standard metrics used in parks planning, that even if we build this, just based upon the formula, that this would satisfy the formula, meaning there may be, you know, an identified deficiency in terms of square footage of these types of facilities. So what I was trying to say, that if we don't build this project as a result of tonight's action item, it's foreseeable that through the master planning process, they may even identify a larger deficiency, if that makes sense.
Thank you, no further questions?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes. Well, I have my own questions. I received today a little document from the Tony Hogg Foundation. And it was a very positive report. However, it only, it mentioned there's only 4,000 skate parks in all of the United States, which represents to me less than 1% of the population. And location, location has always been said to be real estate. And I find that the location of the skate park at Doris Davies Park is a question of hinging on the privacy of the homeowners around the park, because we don't know the exact hours, or how many hours young people are going to be using it. And number two, which I also find very offensive in regards to location, is that it's located right across the walkway of the children's playground. And I, there is a great difference in child development between children and young teenagers. So my concern, really at the bottom, is because of the activity that's going to be taking place, it's a question of accident and the cost of insurance, because someone is apt to get hurt. In the article itself, it mentions various states about how it helps them improve relationships. However, let me just say that in the article, it never mentioned California. It mentioned Montana, New Hampshire, Massachusetts, Arizona, and Maine. And that's like comparing apples to oranges. There is no comparison in culture, regional, suburb, or urban in regards to California versus the other states. So I find that the article was rather weak in its presentation. 4,000 skate parks does not make it popular. Number two, the states in which it was mentioned are all on the East Coast and nothing except for Arizona. It was not mentioned how it would be the use and the relationship in our climate, in our environment here in California. So I find it very difficult to say
You have 30 seconds?
...park actually has been in the proper place. I think per se, I question it. I question it because of cost, because of security, I question it because of privacy and safety.
Madam Mayor, if I might, and there was some good comments in there, thank you, Dr. Rita, for sharing those with us. You know, when this project first, when I first started dealing with this project, when it first came to my attention back in December of 2017, January of 2018, I actually had a part of pumping the brakes, as I called it earlier. I had concerns with the location. And because of those concerns, when we pumped the brakes on the project, we actually re-sited it within the Pebble Beach complex. Originally, when this was contemplated, and it's what really worried me the most, was where this skateboard park was contemplated at Doris Davies. It was actually located on a vacant lot fronting Hughes Drive, literally adjacent to a single-family residential unit. And despite the issues I had with respect to the design-build contract, I equally had as much concern about this, a smaller park being located literally next door to a single-family residential park. So because the deliberation occurred preceding me, involving the council and the CSAC to at least decide Doris Davies, we did put a considerable amount of time, in fact, myself and the executive team, Ms. Smith and Mr. Harris, we actually physically walked those grounds to figure out how within the framework of the council and CSAC's deliberation that Doris Davies Park was the park to be built, one thing that we could all agree on was where it was originally proposed is the wrong place. So we actually walked the grounds and put a considerable amount of thought as to where within that park it should be located to where it would be the least intrusive to the neighborhood, the actual residents that are living around the park. So we did pick a location that is, it's actually right next to a brand-new playground that literally we just certified and opened this week, I believe. And it's kind of up on a slope, there's a kind of a protective tree line. And even though it's a block wall for the purpose of what we're doing here, I would call it a sound wall, because I think it's going to help buffer any potential noise, if you will, from the adjacent multifamily community. I do believe from the single-family community, it's far enough away to where the noise activity that could occur within the actual skateboard park itself. I think it's further, far enough away to where it shouldn't be as much of a noise nuisance to the single-family residential. But I would be remiss to not disclose to you that we did give some consideration to the location of the park, and we have made some accommodations to relocate it within the park. I will tell you, and it was my strong opinion back then, two years ago, that had we went through with the original plan by the council to build it at the Hughes Road location, we would have some very, very unhappy residents, particularly the one that would have the house right next to it. I think finally speaking to another point that I think is worth addressing that Dr. Rita had raised was the question of the cost of insurance associated with the potential somebody gets injured. There have been some legal exceptions made for municipalities that get into this world of building skateboard park communities, and there have actually been indemnity or indemnifications extended to communities. There are some responsibilities we have before those are extended to us, such as proper signage and so forth, disclosing at-risk for those that are using the facility. But I don't necessarily believe, I know that was originally a concern when communities were building these parks, but that's been mitigated through legislative effort.
But it is also true that a minor under the age of 16 is not responsible for this health. So therefore, this is a question of the parent's obligations and responsibilities to the health of their child.
Your time is up.
My question is, how are you going to propose security for the situation? I'm sorry, thank you.
So that concludes Rita's item, okay. I believe I had everyone else speak, so it's my turn now. I don't have any objection to the skate park itself. My concern is the allocation. That has been my concern right from the beginning. Like I said, I don't have anything against the skate park being built. It's just the location, and I'm sorry that after doing a little bit of research, and I do have some family that lives in that area, and they have also voiced their concerns. I do have a lot of family, and I'm sorry to say that some of them do live in that area, and they are not happy about it. Most of my questions have been answered as far as liability, the additional expense for safety and maintenance, the actual cost to build it. And it all seems to fit into what it would be to build a skate park of this magnitude. I think it's a wonderful thing to have, but like I said, my only concern is the allocation. I believe that we have, or I do, I'm speaking for myself, I don't speak for anyone else. I still have a responsibility, because I was voted in by the people, and I feel that my first responsibility and my obligation is to the residents of our city. At this time, I will open the public hearing, and I do have quite a few cards. I will allow each person to speak for three minutes, even though we do have quite a few cards here. So I will give you three minutes. The first card that I have is Jen Gonzalez. After Jen will be Robert Ward.
So I do want to thank the mayor and the council members for giving me this opportunity to speak. And in doing this, I need to share a little bit of my personal story, my career story, to address this. So we moved here in 1984 and had our kids. And I didn't, I'm not afraid to admit that I did things a little backwards and went to college after I had my kids. Therefore, we needed affordable options for activities for my own children. So they turned out that those opportunities were things like City of Victorville Tiny Tots, dance classes, sports, T-ball, soccer, Little League. All were afforded to us, whether it was use of field or facilities by Parks and Rec. And I do want to thank you for that, because they did have that opportunity. Never were my children asked, told, or disregarded so that they had to dance, attend Tiny Tots classes, or play sports in the street. On a second note, I am superintendent of Victor Elementary School District. And I've been so, working in this district for over 25 years. Started as a teacher at Liberty, which I'm sure some of you are familiar with. I've been a principal at Galileo. I've been chief business official, where I was in charge, one of my duties was liability, and now superintendent. So during this time, I've had quite a bit of observation of skateboarders. So during this time, I've had quite a bit of observation of skateboarders, especially when I was a teacher at Liberty. These kids are here after hours on our campuses. There is no, any way, shape, or form type of supervision there at this time. And while they're there, it's a closed campus. Gates are locked. So if they're not on my campus, they're in empty lots on streets. It's hazardous. If they're injured, it's hard to get to the kids. There are no restrooms. And I think I have enough knowledge of skateboarding to attest the fact that the physics of our campuses are not made for skateboarding. I'm here just to appeal to you that our skateboarders are practicing a sport, this is an Olympic sport now. They're using skills that we're trying to teach in the schools, but they're learning them naturally from their peers, like communicating, collaborating, creative thinking, critical thinking. And they're doing this out there without any help from the community. So I'm appealing to you to please give them the community's support. Those are all my comments.
Can we refrain from clapping until we get through with everyone speaking to allow everyone their time?
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm in, I'm in support with you in regards to the fact that you should use the money much more wisely. Plan a little better, get some figures. Because I'm just sitting back here, I'm going like, I'm looking at what was here. And I'm not a mathematician, but I can add one and one. And some things just didn't figure out. So I would ask you and the council to look more closely, spend a little more time. I'm not against children having a place to play. I was a kid once myself, we all were. But as in this thing of safety and what she was just describing, I think something needs to be done a little bit more closely, watched. And that's all I'm going to say, okay?
Thank you. Prince Prosper Edison, and after that, Joshua Justice.
Hi, Council. Just listening to everything that you guys were saying, I agree with the person previously here, Mr. Ward, that you guys really need to take your time to evaluate what needs to be done. I know personally, growing up in the city of San Gabriel, me being a nineteen-year-old right now, just barely getting out of high school, knowing, knowing the people who I used to hang out with. Some of them were skaters and be realizing and talking to them face-to-face. It was a lot of things that they were really dealing with. It wasn't the skating that was really appealing to them, but it was an escape that they were trying to, trying to, trying to get out of. And I say this all is that they need something more than just skating. They need something called love. They need that. And they need, they need more support to exhale what's really inside of them. And I just say this because these are the future kids of this generation. And they need, they need the support, and they need somewhere to learn. And these kids who are going to be young men, young women of the future generation need the infrastructure, how to grow and become leaders of society, just like how you guys are and many others as well. So I say this just to think about this decision right now, or how everything is going to, going to be structured.
You have thirty seconds?
Yeah, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Joshua Justice, after Joshua Justice, Brett Nottingham.
Hi, everyone. Dr. Ramirez, can you hear me okay?
Rita, can you hear him?
No.
Can you hear me now? I just want to make sure you can hear what I'm going to say. Hi, Rita, can you hear me? Hi, Rita, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear it now.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you, everyone. So I know there would normally be a lot more people here. As you guys know, about sixty percent of the high desert of the residents here commute down the hill. So coming here after work is pretty tiresome, especially when you have kids. So I know I'm on the older side of the younger side here, I guess I could say. But I've been wanting a skate park in Victorville since the early nineties and mid-nineties. I've moved away several times, and every time I come back, I've been kind of disappointed, there's no place to go skateboarding. And now I'm a father, I have a five-year-old. And he loves to take his scooters, he tries to skateboard. And when we travel, we try to stop in skate parks, you know, all along the West Coast. And there's always skate parks in even small towns, like super-small towns. So I think it's something that's really long overdue. Mayor Garcia, I know your concerns about the park, and I know Dr. Ramirez has concerns about the park. But I can tell you right now that we have kids practicing T-ball there. I was a coach for my son's team. We practice there when he's four years old, five years old. And I really have faith in the plan that bringing more people, more money into the park is going to make it safer. I've lived here for a long time, since the eighties. And we really hope that you pass this. I think Dr. Ramirez had some comments about a few things. So the first thing is, the cost of the actual skate park is $412,000. It's about $26 a square foot. According to the Tony Hawk Foundation, the average price is between $25 and $60 a square foot. So $26, especially in California, is really competitive. So as far as the cost, it's very competitive. The other amount, which I'm not sure if everybody knows, is for all of the other things that go along with it, the bathroom, the parking lot, the lights. And as far as kids, my kid loves skateboarding. We love to go to the park. He might play baseball and then go to the park. So as far as being concerned about little kids being around skateboarders, the little kids are skateboarders, they're on scooters. And hopefully their parents don't let them rollerblade, but... It's not cool anymore, just for those that didn't know. Like, I have no concerns as a parent of the park being there. Hook Park has not always been great. Liberty Park has not always been great. But when there's people there, it feels safe. I take my kids to Liberty and to Hook every week. And when there's lots of people, you know, the shady jugulars are not there. Anybody that shouldn't be there is not there. And I feel very confident that if you guys approve this and it's built, that it's going to be safe, and then a lot of our kids are going to really enjoy it. So, you know, it's been a long time coming. It's been 25 years, in my opinion, that we should have had a skate park.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Brett Nottingham, and then after Brett, Joseph Lucas.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, City Council. Thank you for giving us time to come and speak tonight. It's a pleasure to be here. I, little history about myself, I've been in the high desert for 36 years. I'm a retired construction worker. I spent 15 years spending time volunteering in youth sports in Victorville and Hisparia. So I've spent a lot of time with the youth. I raised three, my wife and I raised three sons. And I know that the youth is, we need to do something for the youth, I realize that, right? Skateboard park is kind of a concern to me. If there's, you know, I don't know all the ins and outs of your guys' budget and how much money you have and what you're going to do with it. But if you have a certain amount of funds for a park, I would recommend building more parks or enhancing the parks that you have rather than a skateboard park, just because of what comes with having a skateboard park as far as drugs, activities that aren't supposed to be happening, injuries, exposure, and whatnot. I think that the City Council, with due respect, if they spent time thinking about the cost of a skateboard park versus the cost of, let's say, putting the money into different kinds of areas in Parks and Recreation, because the way I understand, I guess there's $6 million in the park fund. But yeah, it's, it's a concern of mine because I don't, I've never seen, I've been a proud member of Victorville and Hisparia, the high desert. I've watched Victorville grow. And I don't think Victorville is a skateboard city myself. I know everybody wants, I know everybody wants to see the park, and I understand that. But if we could promote bigger parks to have bigger sports, to bring in a broader array of people that would benefit from the money that you guys are going to allocate for a skateboard park, I think that would be a lot wiser decision to make. That way, the community is being served in a better manner. The City Council has a big responsibility to spend the money wisely and to appropriate funds wisely, and to make sure that everybody is safe. And that's just my suggestion, that the City Council takes large consideration on how the money is spent, and it's spent wisely where everyone can benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Lucas, after Joseph. Looks like Loretta something. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council and other distinguished members of the city. My name is Joseph Lucas. I've been a resident of Victorville for around 12 years. I have three sons, 15, 13, and 11. My son Levi and I ride skateboards and have been looking forward to seeing this park be built for a long time. If this isn't approved, to say the least, it would be a disappointment. The design for the park is brilliant. My son and I prefer to skate in bowls or empty pool-like structures. And we currently have to drive all the way to Fontana to find a good park with these types of features, which limits how often we can skate and practice. The proposed Pebble Beach Park has a wonderful variety of these kinds of obstacles, as well as a good selection of other types of obstacles that many people enjoy skating on. A lot of kids will benefit from this park. When I was a kid, I came from a broken home. To this day, I've never met my father. I was angry and frustrated, I didn't know why. I took out my anger and frustration by riding my bike. I rode at improvised dirt jumps in vacant lots and at skate parks. And there were many times I had the choice between getting high or riding my bike. There were some nice skate parks in the area, and those made the choice to ride my bike a lot easier. Some kids from bad homes who have abusive parents or neglectful drug-addict parents escape these negative home environments by skating. They get their mind off of the negativity and spend time with other kids who have a common interest. And to respond to the last gentleman, you know, not everybody likes to play baseball or soccer. Skateboarding is becoming a lot bigger of a sport. And, you know, kids up here in the high desert need that option. I stopped riding my bike a long time ago and only started riding skateboards because my son began skating and I wanted to spend time with him. My 11-year-old son loves roller skating and oftentimes accompanies us to the skate park to ride his roller skates. This park would be a great benefit to the youth of the community, an asset or resource that kids can use to vent or escape. Skating is going to be an Olympic sport, is no longer associated with hoodlums. And kids are going to skate whether there is a park or not. And a park would keep them off of school property and commercial retail property, which are popular alternatives when there is no designated skate park. Kids will find obstacles to skate on private property if there are no parks with obstacles to skate. Abanning, you know, not passing this altogether would be a huge disappointment to a lot of kids. The nearest parks are in Apple Valley or Hisparia, and a lot of Victorville kids have a hard time finding transportation to these parks. The Apple Valley and Hisparia parks are always occupied, and there is a community-like atmosphere where most people know each other and cheer each other on and help each other when someone fails or can't learn a trick. And in regards to the issue of location, pretty much every park is adjacent to private residences. And if that's the issue, I don't know what other park or...
Your time is up.
...we could put it, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure who this is, but it's, it looks like either Rodolfo, Rodelto, Steven. And after Steven, another one I can't read. Looks like Ryan.
Hello, Mrs. Mayor. Hey, Council. Where to begin? My name is Rodolfo Steven Ariaza. I have been living in Hisparia, California for over a year now. I'm originally from the Los Angeles, California area of South Gate, California, and Huntington Park, California. And I am, I was a skateboarder in the past. And I do understand a lot of the atmospheres and the ways how skateboard, how skateboarding goes in itself. The same just with what Mr. Prince Prosper was going at and Mr. Ward. It would be a wise decision to think about just a park, just to automatically keep faith in it and, not faith, sorry, prayer into it just to see what would be the best for our community and the best for the parks itself. Growing up in South Gate itself and going to the skate parks there, I did see that there was a lot of activity of uses of drugs, specifically smoking marijuana and drinking alcohol. And I have seen that skateboarders, and even for myself, I did skateboard as a form and a place of where I was void and empty. And I needed a place to go and to get rid of my stress, so I would always turn to skateboarding. And I always go to the skate parks and meet up with some of the people I used to call friends and say, hey, you know, let's go hang out, let's do this, let's do that. And automatically, I have seen that without the wisdom and without... Sorry, Mrs. Mayor, I'm just trying to think right now, just with the whole, everything that's going on. But all I would say is that just with where it's going to be built and the park itself, I would look into consideration of just thinking about doing something else, building other parks. Because automatically, I have seen if people are going to be doing that type of stuff in those type of parks, that it shouldn't just be built. Reason why is because there's little kids around the skate parks. Even for myself, going to the skate parks, I would see that there would be a lot of potheads there, smoking, drinking, around little kids. And looking at that, I just couldn't have any form or contact into that. So I'm not saying skateboarding is bad. And I'm not saying the skateboarders of Hisparia Skate Park are bad. I love skateboarders. I would recommend anybody to do any type of sport. But using sports to do anything as if just bring a bad atmosphere or bad habitation around areas, I just don't agree of it. So that's all I got to say. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan, I believe it is, Ryan. Oh, Ryan. Former mayor.
Mayor Garcia, members of the Council, thank you for having me here and allowing me to speak tonight. I just wanted to talk about a few things. I'm actually here because my son Gavin, who's right over there, is a huge advocate of a skate park. He'd like to see one built in Victorville. Of course, he'd like to see one built closer to where we live. So on that note, I don't necessarily disagree with your thoughts on the location, but I think what might behoove the Council to look at on a go-forward basis is building more skate parks, not just one. But I wanted to bring a couple of points of issue to you all, since I used to sit up there, and I know what you're dealing with. This is an issue that you already decided, okay? This is something that the Council already moved forward on, gave direction to staff, told them what to do. So going out to bid on such an issue is a big deal. You issue an RFP, you go out there, they, you have contractors respond, they submit their bids, you open the bids, you have staff that suggests you award those bids. And so, from that perspective, my concern is that this is a decision that's already been made, and now you're trying to unwind it, and that is somewhat of a liability to the city. Along those same lines, should you deny the item tonight, you're in serious jeopardy of a lawsuit. I hope your city attorney has advised you of such, because the one thing that I'm involved in, in my professional life, is insurance and liability issues are my day-to-day job. And one of the things that you're all faced with here today is, there's nothing wrong with this bid. There's nothing wrong with the award to construct, and yet you're going to deny it based upon a political reason, or just because you just don't want it in that location. I don't like it in that location, and you all should remember, if we go back in time, that when this was first proposed, I was not in favor of it, because we were not in a fiscally position to approve such a project. But you guys are in a much better place today. So I do hope that your city attorney has advised you of such. But I just want you to know that I know you all have a tough decision to make tonight. You have the information in front of you. You know what you need to do. I'm hopeful that you'll consider moving forward on building this skate park, not because it's the right location, because I agree with Mayor Garcia, it's not the right location.
Your time is up.
But you need to build this skate park and many more. Thank you.
I do have another Ryan. Is there another Ryan?
Hi. My name is Ryan Spiteri. I wanna start off by saying, like, I don't have anything against skateboarders or skateparks or anything like that, but I think we, it's time for a shift in the community, and we should, we should press our kids to educate their minds a little more, instead of running on autopilot. I'm a father of two boys, and I would much rather have my kids hitting the books instead of the pavement, you know? And I also used to skateboard as a child, and I loved it. I still like it. I still do it here and there. And really, I have nothing against it, but I do know what goes on in those places, and sometimes it ain't no good. And I'm just looking out for the best interest of our youth and our future here. That's all I have to say. Amen.
Thank you. Aaron Moreno, and after Aaron will be Danny or Donnie Damron.
Hello, my name is Aaron Moreno. I am a elementary school teacher at the Hisperia Unified School District. I'm sort of disheartened that I have to be back here again, two weeks later, after telling my story once, but for the benefit of Dr. Ramirez, I will tell it once again. When I was a senior in high school, back in 2010, at the beginning of the year, I had a friend named Brian. I used to skate. He used to skate. Because we were forced to be skating on the street all the time, because we didn't have a skate park at that time, my friend Brian is not with us today. So speaking back on what Dr. Ramirez said earlier about injuries in the skate park, that's not something that's going to go away. I'm sorry, that's not something that is going to occur because you approve a skate park. That is already happening. And in researching Brian's death again, as I was approaching today's date, I was, again, flabbergasted by how many articles just kept coming up. I just typed in some generic words, and I urge you to do the same when you get home. Type in "Victorville skateboarder dies." It should not bring up that many results. It was ridiculous. And going back to, I forgot, one of the other speakers mentioned, if that was happening with soccer players or football players dying on the street because they didn't have a park to play, and they were getting hit by cars, I believe this issue would be resolved immediately. But because there's some sort of stigma with skateboarding, I heard Dr. Ramirez earlier say something along the lines of the type of activities that will be happening on, with the people that'll be attracted there. And that just brings to mind that there is truly some stigma from the older generation of what kind of people are attracted to skateboarding. But you cannot categorize every single skateboarder into one, into one type of person, right? There's multiple types of people that are gonna be in the skateboarding community, but you have to realize that there is value to it, and it's a safety issue, because, again, we're having young people in the streets getting hit by cars. And since I have thirty seconds, I'll talk about the location, too. I don't think anything up on that agendas is talking about location, from what my understanding as a, someone in the public. That's talking about who's gonna be awarded the bid of the construction, not the location. So we need to talk about, again, who's gonna get the bid, not whether we're gonna build it, or what the location is, from my understanding. Thank you.
Donnie Damron.
Hello. My name's Donnie Damron, and I'm a local business owner up here and a general contractor. I've been a Victorville resident over forty years now. I mean, I grew up in Old Town Victorville, went to Victor High School, Victor Junior High. But anyways, long story short, I truly wanna thank you guys for getting this back on the calendar tonight, you know? And, you know, I wanna thank you for the time some of you have put into this and doing your due diligence and, you know, to ensure that the funds aren't spent frivolously on this project, you know? I know sometimes taking a stance, you know, on, taking a stance that isn't popular is not easy, but I understand that making an educated vote that is the best interest of the community is what, you know, you swore under oath to do. I hope this evening, we can all work together to make a decision that the city deserves and the community has waited a long time for. You know, so CS Legacy is known in the construction industry for building parks in cities at a very fair price. In the skateboard industry, CS Legacy is known for bringing on well-known skate park builders to their projects, you know? And I know if this project is approved, they're gonna hire a guy named George Zeronzi from GeoCon Skate Parks. You know, he's been building skate parks over twenty-five years and is as good as they get. So, so all in all, I know this skate park project, you know, it'll be two million dollars. You know, it's a lot of money, but I think, you know, looking at the big picture for Park and Rec, it's minimal, you know? So, and shit, I got a minute left, shit, I saw. All right, but, so six years ago, I worked closely with the Hisperia Park and Rec to get a skate park built. And, you know, City Council was opposed to it, the head of Park and Rec, they were opposed to it for quite a while. And, you know, I convinced them to designate a small piece of land at the Lime Street Park to build a park, just to prove to them that, you know, it won't be what they think it is. And to this day, I mean, you know, I still work with Park and Rec there, I still work with the park rangers of the city of Hisperia, you know, Mario Chavez, who's a park ranger there, is one of my good friends. And, you know, me and Mario actually went to school with your grandson Danny, Victor. We graduated ninety-five, you know, so we've been up here for a long time. But you can ask him to this day, it's the most used-
Your time is up.
...facility in Hisperia parks, you know, for the size of it. And there's very, very few problems. There's a lot more people who drink playing softball in the evenings than people drink at the skate parks. There, you know, I'm not gonna say it's gonna be perfect, but all in all, if you just call our neighbor, Hisperia, ask them, say, hey, how many problems do you guys have with the park? I can-
Your time is up.
-assure you, you know, they'll give you an answer, you know, and say that it's not that bad. Thank you.
Rachel Kavanaugh. And after Rachel, Eduardo Salinas, I believe it is.
Just wait, I'll wait for my time. So, thank you, everyone. It's really awesome to see everyone here, and I'm really happy for the City Council to allow the issue to be talked about again, well, I guess, the matter of the bid. So I don't want to take away from the idea that it should only be the bid that we're talking about, but I do wanna just speak on a couple of the comments that were said in terms of the skate park. It sounds like, so my issue when it comes to politics is, whenever there's a disconnect between the people and politics and the policy that they're making. So while this is a skate park, it is still a policy, and it sounds like, from some of the concerns with the mayor and Dr. Ramirez, that they're a little disconnected, literally, physically, mentally, you know, like disconnected from skateboarding, from skateboard, from a skate park, from what actually goes on from the community. Not, no disrespect in any way, shape, or form, but if we are gonna be in these positions, we do have to be connected, and so I think it's important. Lancaster is a city that's in the desert and is near, not nearby, but they just opened a brand-new skate park. It had a huge turnout, a big grand opening. It looked beautiful from what I saw, they had the city there. I'm assuming the mayor was the one that was there. I don't know if he was the one that cut the ribbon, but I know the city was highly involved. So I think it'd be really beneficial for, I don't know if the City Council themselves or someone in the city manager can maybe reach out to whoever was involved in the planning in Lancaster and talk to them, see how they came to the conclusion, why they saw it as a benefit, because they obviously saw it as a benefit. It's built, it's open, people are skating it. So I think it's, look at cities in California, since if we're having an issue with not having too much information about skate parks in California, that's a brand-new one that just opened February twentieth. So I think if there are still concerns about that, hopefully after this bid is approved, maybe that's a process that can be done to get more information about skate parks. And I do, I would really encourage Dr. Ramirez and even, and the mayor and any, any person who's dealing with this, if you have not gone to a skate park, please go. Actually, go, actually go watch, I mean, you see all of the, all of the people that are here in the audience that have a skateboard with them, those are the exact kids that you're talking about, you know? And you'd actually be very surprised at how quiet a skate park can be. All you hear are the wheels, are you, you'll actually be very surprised at how quiet it is, when everyone is concentrating on trying, on getting out of their heads and putting it into that board. So please, like, that's what I said, like, that softball comment, more people drinking during softball, that's so true. I know very many skaters that do not drink and do not smoke for the exact reason that it'll mess up their skating. So I just, we just gotta, you have a little more research, but thank you, everyone, thank you for your time.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Edward Salinas. I've worked in the skateboard industry for seven years now, and I would just like to debunk any common misconceptions and express the benefits skate parks have on cities. So, on the contrary, providing designated spaces for positive activity is the best way to curb unlawful behavior among youth. The city of Long Beach, actually, discovered a significant reduction in crime after building their first skate park in 2008. Drug-related incidents dropped by sixty point nine percent, violent crimes by twenty-nine point three percent, and overall incidents in the area decreased by twenty-two point eight percent. Skateboard also reduces damage to public property of homeowners, businesses, and public spaces. Well-designed skate park does draw skateboarders off the street and to their designated parks. Also, in the case of safety skateboarding, the majority of skateboarding injuries season falls due to surface irregularities on streets and collisions with motor vehicles or pedestrians. In 2012, we lost thirty skateboarders, all due to deaths occurred on a roadway, and last year, we actually dealt with two in the city of Victorville. So with that being said, I get people say that skateboarding does come with the stigma of this stuff, but, I mean, it's all in the stats. USC just recently did a study which links mental illness and mental health to skateboarding and how it does further mental health, and it actually provides social skills to many kids. I'd be the first one to say that I've met some of the greatest people through skateboarding, and some of them being in this room, some of them being my coworkers, and, I mean, I have nothing else to say, but this would just be a positive for the city of Victorville.
Thank you. Please, so we can continue. Damian Hires, and after Damian, Romero Rodriguez. Damian Hires, is he here? Romero.
Hello, Council. One of the things about liability, I pretty much believe it's an implied liability. When the dad goes and buys a skateboard to the child, he knows what's can possibly happen. Also, in the proposals, was there also a number there for the cost of additional insurance, liability insurance for the park? And also, another question, if this position, this place is not suitable for the park, do you guys have a plan B in other place in consideration to move it there, in the case it possibly doesn't pass this time? I believe the skate park, no matter what you say, I think it's up to the parents to take care of the kids. I think the Council is taking consideration, raising the kids where they're gonna be. They're gonna drink, smoke, or do whatever, wherever they're at, the skate park, at school, at the beach, playing tennis, playing baseball. The place of the city and the benefits of the community is building parks for the kids to play football, baseball fields, tracks, even quarter-mile tracks for the people to enjoy themselves. So skate park falls in line with that. I really don't believe that myth about everybody's a drug addict, smoking pot, whatever. They're gonna do it, whether they're at a skate park or bicycle park or at home. It's not the city or the council people to decide how they're gonna raise the kids, it's actually the parents. The very important part is, you have, you have this thing right now where you can actually have the kids there and give them some independence. Everything right now, the kids are so helicoptered over, sometimes they need a little independence to make the right decision or the wrong decision. And right now, we have technology. They say about all these drug dealers, these dopers, you have facial recognition, the police department can put two, three cameras there, and you think any of the bad people are gonna go there? No, they're not, because they're gonna be, they're gonna be recorded. So what it was ten years ago, or fifteen years ago, doesn't exist now. And then we have police force, too. So that's very important, too, and they're gonna be doing their job, park rangers are gonna be there, and parents also. I know a lot of kids are latchkey kids, they can just stay home and drink their parents' liquor or smoke their parents' butt or whatever, and not go to skate park, but it's a sport now. And I'm a, I used to be a bull rider, and my dad never got angry when I went and rode somebody else's bull and got injured, because it's my liability. My dad knew what he got me into and what the outcome would be. Now, if you don't want him getting injured- Now, if you don't want him getting injured, buy him a Nintendo or Playstation, and they'll be nice and chubby, and maybe type 2 diabetes in the future, so it's up to you guys, so thank you very much.
I'm Mayor Garcia, council members, staff. My name is Amy Stanton, and I believe in following through with the governmental processes. The council has already gathered significant community and staff input, and already voted in favor of the skate park and the location. Please respect and honor this council's prior vote. It's your duty to award the contract unless there is some fault with the bid. Thank you.
Those were all the cards that I had, bigger cards, therefore I close the public hearing. And at this time, I request a motion and a second.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, may I?
Just a second, I have to start in order here. Well, no, we're doing this differently tonight, but Mr. Cox, Councilmember Cox is first. I'm doing it alphabetically.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want to say that I listened very carefully to the questions and the comments in regard to the three different comments, to take more time to evaluate the numbers. The numbers are correct, this is to award a bid, this is not the whole contract, and we have gone over that, and we could continue, but the numbers aren't gonna change unless we don't award the bid, and then the next bid could be anywhere. Two individuals said we need to support the kids. I'm not sure denying it is a support of them, but thank you for your comments. Also, we need to do something for the kids, there was four people who indicated that, but one individual said more parks and not a skate park. I can show you a lot of people, that if we proposed a park, people would be opposed to that. That's why we try to get the parks first, and then you build the homes around the park. So the skate park is new. There was some concerns in regard to smoking pot and drinking beer, but if you don't build a skate park in an existing park, that's exactly what you will have, it'll be in an isolated area. So whether it's built here or someplace else, it'll always be built in an existing park, because otherwise, you don't have any policing, you have tremendous kind of additional cost. So you want it in a park where the activities occur, where it can be policed when it's closed at night, so that there are sufficient lights, and so that everyone recognizes what it's for. So, we also talked about, well, skateboarding in the park, that's where you skateboard. And do we have another location? We don't, as far as I know, but if we did, it would be at another park. So you'd always have the issue of someone not wanting it in an existing park, but if you're realistic, you have no other place to put a skate park. It would be like building a basketball court out in an isolated area. And then you're going to have drinking, and smoking, and pot, and beer, and things that you don't want, so put that out of the way. In regard to, a lot of emphasis is placed on the numbers, this is for the awarding of the bid, and I hope that everyone understands that that's what's before the council, every council has one vote. If it's real intended council, if it's denied to put it someplace else, I wish that had come up two and a half, three years ago, so that we would be talking about the allocation of where the park should be. And yes, I have friends that live there, but my decision is based upon the greater good for the greater number of people, not a couple of friends who may be offended that there be a park there. These are the difficult decisions that we have to make. And in the ethics course that we have to take and we have to sign, we're often reminded that our purpose here is to serve the greater number and make decisions that are in the best interest of the city, even if personally, we don't want to do it. We have the obligation. We do not know who voted for it against us, but we have to represent the whole city. Makes it difficult, but if we do the right thing, it's an easy decision. That's all I have to say, and thank you very much.
Next, Ms. Gomez.
Yes, I would like to thank everybody that's here. It is a very difficult decision all the time, because each one of us may have a different perspective and something that we glean forward, whether it's probably fiscal sustainability, someone else may have, like you've heard, possibly the location, someone else looks at the interrogation of looking at the bidding process, and perhaps sometimes we don't lack the experience of being a developer, so we have a lot of questions in our mind, and at the forefront, it could be a priority when we don't understand how the development works. So I do appreciate the fact that when someone calls me, I do listen, I do take in consideration. It's always a tough decision to make, because ultimately, the way I make my decisions, first primarily takes a lot of the fiscal sustainability of how it's gonna affect our budget, but then that could equally be with your voice, if you feel that that's something that you necessarily need. You know, I'm not here to voice my own opinion, I'm here to support a lot of the opinion of every one of you, so I'm gonna prematurely thank and congratulate each one of you for being here and for this park being possible to go celebrate tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to CS Legacy Construction for granting the city a 30-day extension, so that the council can concentrate on its focus on whether or not it's going to award the contract, that's the issue before us tonight. This park's been years in the making, and tonight, we decide whether this construction company is gonna be awarded the contract, so that this project can move forward. There are a number of absolutes in this project that I'd like to spotlight. But before I do that, the, Mayor Garcia is correct, and our former mayor here, sitting in the audience, is also correct, council members have a duty to the people, and to make decisions that are in the best interest of the city and fulfill the greater good for our city. And that's why, in May of 2018, this council considered all the questions as to whether or not to build a skate park, and where to build a skate park, and what it should look like. And at that time, the council went from a small project to almost doubling its size. So the clear will was not just to have a park, it was to have an almost double the size park at that time. We've heard nothing tonight that demonstrates that there was an error in the original decision, we heard that from our city manager. I'd like to spotlight the hard work, there has been good faith effort throughout the flow of this project to carry out the consistent and repeated direction of the council. And we should also bear in mind the countless hours that staff has invested toward bringing us to this very moment. We should consider how prospective businesses have invested much time, their own time and resources to bid on this project. As to the financials, monies were appropriated for this project nearly two years ago, in May 2018. No further appropriation would be required with the passing of this motion. It's worthy to note, it has been 10 years since recreation diff monies were spent to add or improve parks, and after this project, there would remain substantial monies in our cash fund balance to address CSAC projects that it may identify in its upcoming master plan. Course of conduct, it's been 15 months since the last formal direction was given to staff. During that time, there has been no effort whatsoever, zero, to, for the council to reverse course. There has never been a council member who's requested to reconsider this agenda item to check and see, or take another bite at the apple, to see if there's been a change in the will of their people. There has not. Confidence in the proposal before us, we've heard nothing that would cause us to doubt the thoroughness of staff's diligence and the competence of this company to faithfully execute the city's vision for its first skate park in Victorville. And recent testimony, we've learned tonight about possible reputational damage that could ensue to the city in this 11th-hour attempt for no good cause to put a cog in the proverbial will of progress. Please, I ask that our decision reflect not only good business practice, but also the impassioned voices of reason we've heard here tonight and two weeks ago from our neighbors in the audience. Finally, as to the will of the people, the plain facts are, number one, that multiple public hearings established the will of the people, two, that the council made repeated and resolute decisions to fulfill the will of the people, and three, that extraordinary time, energy, and resources have already been expended to execute the will of the people. We should not be spending our time trying to unwind the clear and consistent direction of the council, the clear and consistent course of conduct of everyone involved in this project. I respectfully ask that our vote tonight support the decided will of the people. We know what that is, that is to award this bid, to build a skate park, and to build it at Doris Davies Park. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Rita, you're next.
Well, I've heard enough, Dave, I disagree. I've heard enough, have to, the last little mention of skate park. Let me say, the truth will stand on its own merit, and political maneuvers outside the city chamber does not work. Therefore, let me say, I do not accept what has been said, nor do I believe it.
Did we lose her, or did she finish?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, thank you very much, then. Well, I will continue with the same thing that I said before, and I have heard stories galore, and I'm sorry, I didn't write a speech a mile long beforehand, I was just waiting to see what developed tonight. I know, like I said before, I was elected by the people to do the best that I could to represent them, and I don't listen to what others say, because I have to make my own decision. And sometimes, it's very, very difficult to make a decision, but again, it's not personal, it's not about me, it's just what I'm seeing, and who's here, and who spoke, and what they stated. There was a lot of debate going on, therefore, I think we're ready to make a decision here.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez voting no.
Now we move on to item number two, Doris Davies Ammonities Project Award of Construction Contract. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council approve the notice of exemption for the Doris Davies Park Ammonities Project, appropriate additional funds for recreation diff in the amount of $652,466.59, award a construction contract to California Landscape and Design for the Doris Davies Park Ammonities Project in the amount of $412,458.50.
Thank you. I will call out the council members in order, like I have them. Questions for staff? Councilmember Cox?
I have no questions.
You don't?
I have any questions.
Ms. Jones?
Just if we could have a...
I'm sorry, I'm out of order. It should be Ms. Gomez.
Sure.
Yes, so I'm looking at the $412,000, and as I looked at that portion, it's not a part of the fiscal impact, I just wanted an explanation as to what was the reasoning
Madam Mayor, and members of the council, the total fiscal impact for this item to be funded from the Development Impact Fund is $652,466 and some change. The $412,000 identified specifically for the landscape and design component of this contract award is the $412,457 and some change. The difference is largely comprising an action taken by the council back in 2018, August, to be more precise, to where, independent of tonight, back in August of 2018, the council did authorize the award to proceed with, I'm sorry, the council did authorize to proceed with the construction of two restroom facilities, so that would, that 217 effectively makes up the large part of the difference.
And then, I'm looking, if potentially this item were to pass, how much would be left in the recreational diff fund?
Based on the amount that was available at the time that we drafted this staff report, and I'm just rounding the total expense for this item and the previous item to be $2 million, at the time this staff report was drafted, the unencumbered fund balance, which is an elaborate term Mr. Harris uses for available cash, 6.6 million minus a two would leave you about $4.6 million.
Right, thank you, and then the following question is, I didn't see a 5% inspection and testing cost for this project, was one needed?
There is identified a component, it's approximately 5% for materials testing, and that, I'm sorry, is on.
I do see that, it's just different wording. And then, I'm looking at page 20, and I'm assuming, 20 and then 21, just the first two portions, literally just a copy of the first item in order to gain clarity of the reporting, I'm assuming, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, no further questions.
Rita, do you have any questions?
No, no, thank you.
I don't have any questions either.
Madam Mayor, I haven't had an opportunity, may I?
Oh, I skipped you?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Thank you. I have one question, Mr. Metzler, are you confident that California Landscape and Design has the expertise and resources necessary to bring this project to fruition?
I am.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'll go ahead and make the motion and move as recommended by staff.
It's a public hearing, I don't think we've had the public hearing on it yet.
What?
It's a public hearing item, and I think we have to open and have the public hearing item on this.
I missed that, too.
At this time, I open the public hearing. I do have two speaker cards, the first one is Joseph Lucas, and after him is Amy Stanton. Joseph Lucas? And Amy, you don't wish to speak? No? Okay, very good, we will move on. I do not have any other speaker cards. I close the public hearing, and at this time, I need a motion and a second.
I'll go ahead and move as recommended by staff.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez, do you have any comments? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez?
Abstain.
Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez abstaining.
Motion carries with Councilmember Ramirez abstaining.
Now we move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar items three through 11 may be approved with one motion, unless there are items that need to be pulled for discussion.
I'd like to have questions on item five and six.
If, if, are there going to be long questions, because we can wait?
No, they're one question, one question, it's just for clarification.
Can we, can we consider the clarification before we vote?
It's up to the mayor, that typically, I think, in the past, you've been fine with that. May I have a question?
Yes, I will allow for her to go ahead and ask her questions.
So for five, I wanted to know, what was the percentage that the City of Victorville made off this loan?
I'm sorry, with the noise, I didn't quite get all of that, can you?
Yeah, so there was, there's this payout, I guess it's coming back to the budget, but I know there's a certain allotted amount of percentages that the city gets on this loan, because clearly not, it's not free, so I was wondering if there was a percentage attached that you had off, off the top of your head.
This loan generated 1% simple interest, so it was $1,822.
Thank you. And then, for item six, there's the hydration source, which I can only presume it's water, but there's a term, it's developer-funded project. Would you be able to tell me a little bit more, if that's more technically, technical vocabulary, or is that, what does that entail?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, it's really to summarize infrastructure improvements that, in this particular case, we as the utility construct, but we construct it relying on money from the developer. And this is more so directly related to electric improvements made to accommodate the customer, which is hydration source, they're a water manufacturer, I'm sorry, it's bottled water is what they're manufacturing and producing.
Thank you, no further questions.
And I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
I defer.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez?
Abstain.
Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez abstaining.
Madam Mayor, could we have just a short break, please, a five-minute break?
Certainly, certainly. We will take a 10-minute break. We got a little carried away, and we went over.
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, we're back from recess, we're starting up again.
Okay.
Okay, we're moving on to written communications, and we're starting with item number 12, am I correct here? Yes. Request to accept 2017 Homeland Security San Bernardino County Pass Through Grant and Purchase of 10 King VHF Mobile Radios. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council adopt Resolution Number 20-005, accepting the award of the 2017 Department of Homeland Security San Bernardino County Pass Through Grant in the amount of $25,676, and authorize a deputy city manager to execute any and all grant-related documents necessary to secure said grant funds and to implement and carry out the purchase specified in the amended grant application, and adopt Resolution Number 20-005, amending the fiscal year 1920 budget for revenue and expenditures for said grant.
Thank you. At this time, council members will be asking questions of staff, and I will follow the same alphabetical order, although I get confused sometimes, but I'll start with Councilmember Cox. No questions. Ms. Gomez?
Sorry, my microphone is off, I have no questions.
Yes, so for clarity of this item, we're purchasing 10 radios for $25,000. I need clarification on a phrase where it says funds awarded has not been spent. I wanted to see if the reason why this is coming is because it requires the grant permission for the depart, from the department, in order for it to be sufficed.
Madam Mayor and council, yes, the grant does require approval by the council to go ahead and purchase the radios.
Thank you, no further questions.
Ms. Jones?
I have none, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem Rita, do you have anything?
No, no, fine.
All right, I don't have any questions either, and I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion in a second.
I'll go ahead and move as recommended by staff.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments?
Yes. I, I don't see any reason why the City Council wouldn't approve this, I think they will, but I'd also like to, either the mayor or the manager, whichever is appropriate, to send a letter to Assembly on County Fire Department Offices for Emergency Services, and to thank them. They were part of this, made available, and we appreciate it. That's all, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez, do you have any comments?
No, fine.
So Councilmember Gomez, motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 13, request to accept California Fire Foundation Grant for specialized wildland firefighting tools and equipment. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation, please.
That the City Council adopt Resolution Number 20-006, accepting the award of grant funds from the California Fire Foundation and Edison International in the amount of Authorize the deputy city manager to execute any and all grant-related documents necessary to secure said grant funds and to implement and carry out the purchase as specified in the grant application and amendment, and adopt Resolution Number 20-006, amending the fiscal year 1920 budget for revenue and expenditures for said grant. The purchase of these tools and equipment will approve, improve the operational capabilities of the Victorville Fire Department and establish compliance with the California Office of Emergency Services standardized apparatus inventory.
Thank you. Councilmembers, questions of staff? Councilmember Cox first.
I have no questions, thank you.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes, for clarification of the reporting, is, will the city, in any of its accounts, be subsidizing any of its operations with this item, or is it just going to be grant money, with the grant agreement?
Madam Mayor and council, the, there will be no subsidy, this grant covers the entire cost of the items that we have requested.
And then, during the fire department's personnel spending the time observing these items that were absent, is, in the future, is the department going to continue its observations? And I'm saying that because the second paragraph says these items were identified as absent, so I'm either presuming there is no more of that observation, or there's diligently more observations and things like this can occur.
These items were identified as, as being absent when we evaluated what was available to transition against the standardized listing. And the, I believe the items that we are receiving will address those gaps, if you will, that existed.
Thank you, no further questions.
Councilmember Jones?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem Rita?
No, thank you.
I'll go ahead and take the opportunity to move as recommended by staff.
Second. Oh, did we get it? Sorry.
I don't think I have any speaker cards, let me see, this one is for public comment. I do not have any speaker cards, so I do need a motion in a second.
A motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez, any comments?
No comments.
No comments.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to item 14. Award of Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement to Godfrey Associates Inc., Library Planners and Consultants for the Library Master Plan Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council adopt Resolution Number 20-007, amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2019-2020 for the Library Master Plan Project, and approve the Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement with Godfrey Associates Library Planners and Consultants in the amount of $84,790 to develop a comprehensive library master plan.
Thank you. Councilmembers, questions of staff? Councilmember Cox?
I do have a question, and I was looking for the finish date. When is the estimated time to complete this report?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I'm going to turn this over to our Director of Community Services, which is where the library is overseeing, Ms. Janelle Davidson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. The estimated timeframe to complete this study is eight months.
Eight months, from start?
From the start date, yes.
Well, I suspected that it would go beyond when we could budget for anything this kind of budget year, and so I would expect then, that mid-year, that we'll have another hearing and a budget amendment next year. That's what we look forward to.
Typically, what we do is, in this particular case, if we award it in this current fiscal year, and it stretches over the, into the next fiscal year, we'll identify the remaining amount to be spent on the contract, and we'll actually incorporate that as a part of the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes, so the questions I have, quite lengthy, but hopefully they're short enough. So I'm looking at the existing plan, when we look at a comprehensive library master plan, are we presuming it's the one in existence? Or can we consider in a master plan, an additional library resource, in means of structure built, being built?
So we don't have an existing master plan for the library that I'm aware of. Perhaps it was studied some time ago, when the library was part of the county system, but as far as, since it's been a city library, I'm not aware of anything. So this would be our initial master plan, that would look at both operations and space needs.
Okay, so for clarifications, an existing, a non-existing master plans that being, is being in place today, if approved, does not include additional structure with any types of funding that we can discuss during this item?
Correct, it does not.
And then, I need an explanation, I'm going to read this paragraph, "The staff removed the library element from the scope of services for the Parks and Rec Master Plan Project, and 50 grand was allocated for a separate library master plan in the fiscal year." I wasn't understanding, something was, but something wasn't, what happened?
So initially, we were planning to study the library needs as part of the Parks and Rec Master Plan that is already in progress, but there were some discussions at the council level that led us to believe we wanted to take a specific look at the library, so it was separated out into a separate project.
Okay, and then here it says, "Only a single bid was received in an amount nearly five times the amount of the project. The single bid received and revised the scope of services." How was this marketed, and why was it misinterpreted if that were the, that was the case?
So we followed the normal RFB process for the initial bid process, based on the feedback we received from the one bid, and others who opted not to bid. It appeared that they interpreted we were looking for more architectural services, which we were not, so we went back and clarified the scope.
And then, another question is, it says, when the discussion, it says current and future library needs, again, that's not the structure of a new building that's pertinent to what we already have established.
It could be either, that's what we'll define as part of the study.
And no further questions.
I have none, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem Rita, do you have any questions?
Can I have a repeat? When do you think you're going to give us the first presentation on this master plan? Can, is it possible within the next 30 days? Can you confirm that, or can you tell me when would be the first possible?
It's done.
Time that you can give the city council members your progress report?
So the first step of this master plan process will be very similar to what we recently did in the Parks and Rec Master Plan, and that is the information gathering. So each council member, as well as staff, would have the opportunity to provide input as far as the needs of the community. That wouldn't be in the form of a presentation. The presentations would come later in the process, so closer to what I imagine would be the seven-month mark. After we get started, we would have the initial recommendations at the CSAC level, that would, if approved, be brought to the city council.
Is it possible for you, when the presentation is made, to give us a written report, so that we have something in our hand, and that we can always refer to it? Will your project task board use that for us?
Are you referring to progress reports on the project?
Well, I know your presentations are very nice, but I always like to read everything I hear, and I would prefer to have a formal written article on your progress, as to where you are, what you're going to do, what your timeline is, because it seems to me, it's wonderful you stand up here and tell us, but you know what? We have nothing in our hands to really refer to, and I prefer that. I always prefer to have some research in my hand, so that I know that if I have to refer to something you've said, that I, I say the fact, that I know the fact. So I would appreciate that you and your group would give us a formal written presentation, so that we have something for our personal use.
Yes, that's something we can do throughout the project.
Do you have any other questions?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards on this item, therefore I need a motion in a second.
Madam Mayor, I move the staff's recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments?
Do you have any other comments?
No, no, thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and make a comment based on what she's asking. She's asking for progressive reports, I don't know how often staff meet to do something of this nature, and to incorporate some kind of timeline or guides, I don't know, we didn't give you direction, we don't give direction to staff, but it wasn't a unanimous vote, or it was no vote, so I'm going to go ahead and be bringing that, if Rita doesn't bring it herself during the time that we can bring agendized items. And so I'm hoping that she hears that, so she brings it herself, and I'll go ahead and bring it up then.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 15, approve Amendment Number Three to Professional Services Agreement with Aragon Geotechnical, Inc. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve Amendment Number Three to the Professional Services Agreement with Aragon Geotechnical in the amount of $50,000 for geotechnical field and laboratory testing services for various capital improvement program projects.
Thank you. Any questions of staff, starting with Councilmember Cox?
I, it's a half of a question and a half a comment. I know that we have a requirement to do these tests, and I would have loved it to see this attached to capital improvement programs. This is in general for all, and I understand that, but as we go along, maybe engineering can remind us when we, council approves a capital improvement, that the testing and everything has already been approved by a consultant, and who's going to provide it, just a reminder that that has been done. Something council approves this, I'm sorry, thank you. This is just a blanket approval, but we really don't know. This is just a blanket approval, but we really don't know where they're going to do the work at, so I just think it's a check and balance that we know.
Gomez?
Yes. So Councilmember Cox brought something that I perceive perhaps is procedural. Maybe it's a type of reporting that council would like to know, but I'm just presuming, and I don't think I should presume. So what does it mean to add something like this to the capital improvement project? And how does that look like if it's already tested and embedded? Does that mean that we do get notification, or we don't get notification? I want to understand, there's more than what he's saying to what he's saying.
This type of contract really is to have someone on board to be handy in the event that there's either a small or big project that requires geotechnical services. And I think in this particular case, we've had enough projects, starting with water, and then eventually dealing with sewer, to where it's drew down on really a contract that was intended to provide us flexibility. We typically, for large projects that we bring back to the council, just as we saw earlier on the skate items, we saw those independent testings separately. And so for the larger projects, that's where you'll see them. The smaller projects, especially those that may not necessarily rise to council approval, or to where we already knew we had this type of contract in place, and instead of showing it like we did on the skate park, we just went ahead with the capital project, knowing that we had the independent testing already in place. That's likely what's occurring.
Okay, so for clarification, then, when I'm looking at the original contract and the different amendments, if I look at the skate park and compare it to this one, there would have been something that would have said testing 5%, and it would have been incorporated in this, is that what was being asked, to have from now on?
My understanding was to have a little bit more reporting to show when we're drawing on these types of contracts.
Thank you.
I have no questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Rita, do you have any questions?
No question.
Thank you. I do not have any speaker cards. I need a motion and a second.
I'll go ahead and move as recommended by staff.
Second.
I have a motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments?
Rita, do you have any further comments?
No, no, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Did you make a motion, or I mean, did you make, did you vote?
Yeah, the answer is yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
So I move on to 16. Acceptance of Strategic Partners Program Grant for ET Water Controllers. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council authorize acceptance of the Mojave Water Agency Strategic Partners Program 2019-2020 grant for ET Waters Controller. Authorize the city manager or his designee to process all documents required for the program and administration, and approve the associated expenditure plan.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have a question of staff, starting with Councilmember Cox?
No, I have no questions.
No questions.
Ms. Jones?
None, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mayor Protem?
No question.
No questions? I do not have any speaker cards, therefore we need a motion and a second.
I'll move as recommended by staff.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move on to public comments. And I do have one card. Richard Matias?
He left.
He left? So I do not have any speaker cards. Now we move on to our city managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Join your neighbors and run, jog, or walk at this free community event, which is the Run in the Park 3K and 5K, Saturday, March 7th, 7:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. over at Hook Park. There's no cost. Then also, we have the community pedestrian and bicycle training program as a project, a joint project of Cal Walks and the UC Berkeley Safe Transportation Research and Education Center. They're holding an event at the Family Assistance Community Center on Saturday, March 7th, 10 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Also, City of Victorville residents can dispose of furniture, garden trimmings, appliances, scrap metal, scrap wood, lumber, and extra trash during our Free Dump Day event Saturday, March 14th, 8 a.m. to 1 p.m. That's over at Victor Valley High School. And those are all the items I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now we move on to our discussion and possible action regarding upcoming agenda items. Three-minute time limit. I will start with the Councilmember Cox. Who agendas?
I have no items.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes, I quite have a litany of them, so bear with me. The first one is the coronavirus. How is the city approaching it? Do our residents know if something were to happen, what the city is prepared to do? I think we need an update on that. We've had it at the state level. I think we would be remiss if we didn't have it here for constituency. So that would be a motion.
And I'll second that. Can I ask for clarification, though? Is it to receive a report on that?
Yeah, I think it's just to receive a report, something that Mr. Obernolte has done, so we learn, the community would like to know. So just a reporting?
Yes.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Mayor Protem Ramirez?
I vote in favor.
Motion carries unanimously.
The other thing is, the homeless agenda workshop that we had, I think there's a lot of inquiry, participation, and understanding that the council can participate. We didn't directly do it, and I abstained from giving information, because I knew we had a lot of information. So I would like to add that to the agenda, so we have further discussion and participation with that homeless workshop presentation. That's a motion.
Is there a second? There being?
I'm going to second for discussion, for I have questions. I know that we are kind of moving ahead, this is to staff, we're moving faster than other cities, quite frankly. And we're also working with the county, and I was just recently asked, how are we doing with that? It seems like what we need is an update. I was really surprised, I was at a meeting when another city in the valley wanted to put their person on a homeless, and they had no idea what they were doing, and the person, they said, at the same minute, had no idea what they were doing. And I wanted to stand up and say, you know, the city's moving ahead, maybe we need a workshop to tell the other cities what we're doing here, so that at least if the other cities don't know, I'm assuming the citizens don't know. The only purpose, not the only purpose, but since we're working with the county, we get constant questions about that, and we're moving, we're really moving ahead and doing a great job, maybe just a separate workshop for information only, or at least add it to the agenda, if we have a light agenda someplace, because there's a lot of concern about the homeless, and I think the public really wants to know, what are we doing? Also, as a part of that, I originally saw on TV where a city down below said, "We don't care if we can't do it, we're doing it, and we're picking up everything, and we're taking it to the trash, and come on down and sue us." On the basis that the state law says the City Council must take care of the health, safety, welfare of the community, and by allowing these camps, and they're not taking care of it, and so it was a kind of a challenge to the governor, surely you're not going to sue us for upholding the state law. Question, and immediately, I had several questions to me after hearing that. What are we doing? Because my understanding is, if we declare health, safety, welfare, we can post properties, and we can enforce. So, the county overrides the Boise case. I'm not suggesting we do it at all, because we now find cities in the LA area saying, "We are going to do this." And so, as a result of the cities speaking out, the governor has allocated more money, and apparently he's going to allocate an additional chunk for mental health services through the county. We have to know who we stand with the county. We're not going to get those funds direct. People think we might, after they heard the governor say it. We're not, it goes through the county. And so have we discussed it with the county? Do we have an agreement? That's something else I think the City Council needs to know and understand, because I'm sure I'm not the only one.
You have 30 seconds?
It's information. We really need a lot of information right now, a lot is going on.
Well, I think it was Ms. Gomez.
Yeah, yeah, that was a motion.
The motion was to have a workshop, I believe. Jim, you seconded it, correct?
Yes.
For the discussion by the council members?
I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox, to have a homelessness workshop. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Vote for homeless workshop.
I'm sorry, you keep that again.
It's to have a?
I'm just a little tired.
It's to have an updated homelessness workshop? Are you in favor?
I will support. I'll say aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
The next item was potentially looking about adding a park ranger. I know we've talked about it in lengthy times, but I think that merits something that we talked about the skate park, and something that we can talk here. Maybe just discussion, possible action, looking at our budget. Oh, and that's my motion, sorry.
Is there a second?
For purposes of discussion, I'll second it. Well, not discussion, but I just have a question. Is this something that would typically come up during the budget process?
The answer to that question is yes. However, I will share with you, as staff is currently working on the public safety plan that we've been directed by the council to put together, that is an element that we're already looking at, so we may capture it in there.
All right, so then, forget that. The next one was the library construction, talking about a library. I have a lot of my colleagues that are interested in talking about a new library and using funding that we already have. So that's something that I'd like to advocate for my council members, that are in favor of something like that. And that's my motion.
Second.
And can I ask a question of clarification, Madam Mayor? Well, so is this not part of the agreement that we just made to determine what's feasible for our city in terms of libraries?
I believe so.
I'm going to go ahead and chime in and say, eight months, and then potentially we could see it. My colleagues have, on many occasions, have said that they would like to see a library structure being built, and we want to look at the diff funds and how we can make that happen. The master plan is directly narrowly tailored to looking at the consistency of what we already have. It's not talking about another new library. That's why I kind of asked, and asked, and asked, and asked, because it wasn't addressing it. So that's why this is that motion that's directing it towards that.
Is that addressed during the?
And maybe I didn't understand the question, but the item that we did just approve, dealing with the library master plan, is going to start first looking at what are the needs from a library perspective. And they'll look at the existing library, they'll look at population, they'll look at neighborhoods and things of that sort. And from that, then they'll decide what are the needs, and that could be just keeping what we have, it could be advice as to perhaps expanding, it could be advice as to identifying an alternate location throughout the city, perhaps because the result of the study that they will perform, will find, could find, that there are areas in the city that aren't provided with enough service from a library perspective. That's all that will come back, and hopefully I articulated it properly, but, so I think that's what's going to come back. It's hard to presuppose, but they're going to look at it more from a needs perspective first. What does this community need, and then make recommendations from there.
Okay, and then the next one is, Councilmember Mayor Protemp wanted reports, timelines of this progress. So I'd like to put that as something that we can agendize, so we can give direction as a whole to the city manager, so that staff can provide that.
I don't mean to interrupt, but we did have a motion and a second on the floor on the library issue.
Yeah, I'm withdrawing that.
Okay, I didn't hear that.
I didn't, I didn't, but I presumed that it would catch on, so thank you for that. So we can send direction, we can direct the city manager for staff to be able to provide those types of reportings. That's my motion. Remember Rita wanted reports? She can't direct staff, it has to be the council. So I want to make sure that she gets what she wanted, in terms of how we do policy. And so if we need to direct the city manager to have that for the city council, that's what my motion was.
I don't, I understand as much that what the desire is of the council, and we can certainly bring back. I think what I'll do is obviously identify, give me some flexibility to identify when the appropriate time is. We want to find when we get into the scope of work, what they're going to focus on first. When we do bring back something for the council, we want to have some kind of meaningful timeframes with meaningful information to share with the council.
And I agree with that. So if there's no motion, and you see the consensus, thank you. And lastly, review the city policy and discuss it with possible action.
What? Lastly?
Review the city policy and discuss it with possible action.
Is that the city policy manual?
Yeah, that's the city policy manual. No later than 30 days from today's date to be brought back as an agenda item.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Mayor Garcia.
What? I'm sorry, I didn't really?
My motion is to review the city policy and discuss it and possible action. The other, the?
The city council policy manual.
Yes, that one.
Oh.
I knew she meant that.
Okay. Well, I, sorry.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez and a second by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Mayor Protem Ramirez?
I don't know.
Rita, this is?
Do you want to abstain?
This is to review the city's policy manual.
Okay, what is the motion?
Who agendas it?
Oh, okay, I vote for it. Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Nothing further?
Oh, no, thank you.
Mayor Protem, did you have anything to agendaise?
Uh, no, no.
Okay. I don't either. So we move on to reports from council members, three-minute time limit. Mr. Cox?
I have two reports, but I don't have the minutes yet from those committee meetings, and so as soon as I get those, I'll report back, probably just give copies to the council rather than do it verbally, and thus, at this time, I have no reports.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes, first in Spanish. Estoy muy agradecida por la comunidad. Muchas personas vinieron hoy y votaron. A las ocho se terminó la votación. Es algo hermoso porque muchas personas por la primera vez estaban votando de hace años. Estoy muy agradecida que pude ser una parte muy pequeña para ellos. Y si no saben, yo estoy corriendo para candidatura para la Asamblea. Pase lo que pase, yo estoy contenta. Yo estoy aquí para servir al público. So in English, I said, "Thank you very much." There's a lot of people who, for the very, very first time, were voting, even though they were registered, they became naturalized since '98, and I'm so glad I was a part of the kernel of these individuals that were coming to vote for the first time. And for those of you that didn't know, I'm running for the State Assembly, District 33rd, whatever. Whatever happens, I'm happy. I'm here to serve the people, and I just wanted to acknowledge that eight o'clock was the deadline. ROV's office is open, we can go over there and watch those votes being counted, and pretty much keep accountability, how our voting system functions. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So first of all, I wanted to once again thank CS Legacy Construction for being so kind to grant our city a thirty-day extension. I'm glad it worked out for this construction company, and congratulations to them. Yesterday I read to a, a lot of Victorville students, and then this is Dr. Seuss Read Loud Week, it's my, one of my most favorite times of the year, because I get to engage with students and, and have a little bit of a play day myself. And I got two more days this week to read again. And then I wanted to let everyone know, in case they're not aware, that, that this council and members of the executive team had a governance relations workshop last Tuesday. I'm so thankful that the council months ago green-lighted that, that workshop, that's part of, then what we're gonna do is the next piece is, is developing our vision, mission, and goals. But that workshop was, I felt very productive, well worth our time, I think it was very helpful, and as I, I believe has largely put us on the right track, and I'm looking forward to the days ahead with our team becoming stronger. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Rita, did you have something to report?
Uh, yes, I would like to thank everybody for their prayers. Since January, I have, have three surgeries in five weeks. I am now disabled. I have lost my toes, my left foot, and the bottom of my left leg, but I'm alive because of the prayers of everyone, especially the pastors of the church, Bernie Bush, Billy Temple, and Emanuele Temple, and Pastor Porson's recent visit. I am totally grateful to the city of Victorville for the medical services that I have received, and I, I am God bless everyone for being there for me. Let me say, I dearly, dearly love you all, and I praise God that I'm still alive in spite of everything. So, thank you so much for, all of you, for being there and your prayers. God bless you.
God bless you, Rita, and we thank God that you're recovering and that you're doing as well as you are, and that you were able to be with us tonight, and you will be here sitting at your chair real soon. We love you, take care. And with that, I believe we don't have anything else before this council, so I adjourn the meeting.